Good evening. I called to order this August 17th meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council, and would say that pursuant to the policies and procedures adopted by the city council relative to virtual meetings, I have determined that it's not feasible for the city council and I to meet together tonight physically. And due to the safer at home order, council members, all council members are participating virtually. Council members will vote by roll call, and these council member will be recognized, they'll raise their hand and indicate their vote verbally. Would the city clerk please call the roll, please?
Councilmember Larson.
President.
Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Bessie.
Here.
Councilmember Cipio. Mayor Pro Tim Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
President.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Harmon.
President.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you very, very much. Councilmembers, Councilmember Cipio, as you know, has asked that a resolution be added to the agenda tonight. And with your permission, I'm going to acknowledge Councilmember Cipio, recognize her, and give her three minutes to make a comment about the resolution, and then we'll determine if there is unanimous consent to add that to the agenda. So Councilmember Cipio, if you would, please tell us what your resolution is about and why you think we should deal with it tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and fellow council members. This resolution that I'm certain you have all received speaks to our strategic plan, which states that one of our focal areas is to have safe and secure communities, of which our public safety department is the foundation upon which any successful city is built. Given all of the gun violence that we are experiencing, this resolution will affirm that the city council and mayor supports the Winston-Salem Police Department to utilize all laws and resources to help combat and reduce gun violence. I think this is a very significant statement of affirmation to our police department, as well as to our residents, to let them know where we stand in terms of gun violence. I don't believe many people knew that our strategic plan has spoken to safe and secure communities. And I believe we should support our police department, but importantly, work to achieve our strategic plan. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Cipio. Councilmember Cipio has asked that this resolution be added to the agenda, and according to city council procedures, it would require unanimous consent. Is there anyone who objects to adding this to the agenda tonight? Just simply say, I object, or?
I object. I think it should be sent through Public Safety for the proper committee process.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Due to Councilmember Taylor's objection, we will not add it to the agenda tonight, and will be adding it to your agenda in a future meeting, Councilmember Taylor. Thank you. Councilmembers, of course, tonight's agenda is comprised of two parts, the general agenda and the consent agenda. And it's always the practice of this council to take the consent agenda as the first order of business. Items on this agenda have been unanimously approved by a committee of the city council, or are being in accordance with established city procedure. Items not removed from this agenda by city council person will be enacted with one vote. If there is items that need to be removed, we will remove it, and they'll be considered individually by the council. Customers, are there any items you wish to have removed from the consent agenda?
C-13.
Sorry, C-13, thank you. I would entertain a motion on the balance, then?
Mayor, I move for approval of the balance of the consent agenda.
Second. Second by Councilmember Larson, I believe. We will then go to the roll call to approve the balance of the consent agenda. Councilmember Larson. Yes. Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Clark.
You're muted.
Oh, yes. I voted three times.
Councilmember Cipio.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
And Councilmember Harmon. Thank you very much. We have approved the balance of the consent agenda. Now we'll look at item C-13.
Item C-13, consideration of items relating to the use of coronavirus relief funds. Resolution approving the use of coronavirus relief funds and authorizing the city manager to enter into an interlocal agreement with Forsyth County for the grant of those funds. Ordinance amending an annual appropriation and tax levy ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem for fees per year 2020, 2021. Ordinance amending department budget ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem for fees per year 2021. This item was recommended by the mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bessie requested that this item be approved. Councilmember Bessie is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, this is a continuation of discussions which began at least as far back as June regarding how we would most appropriately use any coronavirus relief funding received. I think that there is a reasonable proposal that has come out of the Finance Committee, and commend the committee for your work. I do think that there are a couple of key items that we have discussed at previous budget meetings that were not included, that we could afford to include, at least in part. As you know from having read the material, this resolution regarding the second round of CARES Act funds distribution from the state through the county to Winston-Salem is dealing with a total of $2,690,204. Under the proposed resolution and budget amendments coming out of Finance Committee, those funds are being officially allocated to covering a part of the existing salaries budgeted for police and fire personnel. Now, the proposed resolution and budget amendments coming out of Finance uses the savings from that funding for two purposes. A million dollars is reserved for the community equity investments process that begins through the Community Investments Review Committee, whereas the balance of just over $1.69 million is assigned to reduce the budgeted drawdown from city fund reserves. I proposed and circulated to council members a discussion regarding a substitute motion, which would retain most of what the Finance Committee recommends and adds to additional items. And therefore, I'd like to move for discussion, the substitute resolution to do the following, and if I receive a second, I have a brief explanation. The substitute motion would, from the second round of CARES Act funds distribution from the state through the county to Winston-Salem, of $2,690,204, remains allocated, as proposed by the Finance Committee, to covering a portion of the existing salaries budgeted for sworn police and certified fire personnel. The savings from that new revenue placement are directed to the following. First, as proposed by the Finance Committee, $1 million remains reserved for community equity investments through the Community Investment Review Committee process. Two other items are added. $166,650 would be assigned to cover the cost of raising the city minimum wage to $14.31 an hour, effective January 1, 2021. Secondly, $364,985 would be assigned to cover the cost of a 1% public safety salary supplement for sworn police and certified fire personnel, also effective January 1, 2021, leaving the balance of $1,158,569 to reduce the budgeted drawdown from city fund reserves, and would make the corresponding adjustments to the annual appropriations and tax levy ordinance, the project budget ordinance, and the Personnel Committee. That is my substitute motion.
Is there a second, the Councilmember? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams has seconded that motion. Councilmember Bessie, would you like to speak to the motion briefly?
Yes, thank you very much. During our budget deliberations this year, revenue declines from the economic impacts of the COVID pandemic forced us to postpone a number of important investments, including needed community equity investments and needed adjustments to city staff compensation. During our final annual budget discussions and votes in June, we determined that the initial distribution of CARES Act funds from the state through the county was not adequate to fund any of those deferred investments. Instead, we assigned all of that first distribution to reducing our drawdown on reserves. That was included in our general budget. We're now looking at how to deal with a second round of CARES Act distribution from the state through the county. The essence of this agenda item is to determine where those funds are formally assigned and to what other uses we should direct the resulting savings. Now, in addition to reducing the drawdown on reserves, three uses in particular were discussed but postponed in June. One of those already appears in proposed item C-13 tonight, funding for the community-driven equity investments process. As I made in the substitute motion, I'm proposing we retain that. However, one of those that was discussed in June but not included in the motion out of finance would be to keep our commitment to continuing to raise the city employee minimum wage for our lowest-paid employees, who are particularly hard-hit by the extra expenses and insecurity of the COVID pandemic. The second addition would be to keep our commitment to maintaining the salary supplement adjustments that we had planned for sworn police and certified fire employees. They have been especially under pressure in responding to both the nationwide increase in gun violence and the nationwide call for racial justice, both taking place under the pressures of the pandemic. Here in Winston-Salem, we benefited from some of the best-trained and best-performing public safety people in the nation, and we need to do all we can to maintain our ability to recruit, train, and retain the best officers and firefighters. And that's what the substitute motion is intended to do. It directs funds to those three priority investments while also continuing to reduce drawdown of our reserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McIntosh should ask to be recognized.
Yeah, I want to say that this is a very difficult vote for me. I think I'm on record as being the most pessimistic council member as far as what we face for revenue going forward into next year and beyond. This is kind of a freebie this year. We're using funds that are coming from outside, our property tax and sales tax revenues. But going forward next year, we're going to have to come up with this money again. And I am concerned that in order to come up with this additional funding, we'll either have to cut services or raise taxes. And in a down economy, raising taxes is not a good thing to do. That's the negative side. On the positive side, we've made promises to people about this, and I do feel the need to fulfill those promises. I also do feel like this will act as a fiscal stimulus. We've got money that we're going to be paying to local people that I think will be staying in our community. And fiscal stimulus at the inter-recession is typically a good thing to do. It does generate more tax, more sales tax revenue, and I think will help us work our way out of a down economy. So I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Councilmember McIntosh. So Councilmember Adams is recognized.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, as many of you know, I have been very supportive and a proponent of us raising the wage of the lowest-paid employees of the city of Winston-Salem. Sometimes, like I tell people, you have to, sometimes to get what you want that need the most, you gotta do a balance in that. But Mayor, the first thing I want to ask the question, if the city manager or Mr. Rao will explain to the public what these funds are and what is the requirements of their spending per the federal government?
Yeah. Mr. Rao, could you comment on what the requirements on the use of these CARES funds are, please? Mr. Rao or Ms. Tony?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I was muted. So, good evening, Mayor joins, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, members of the city council. So the city is going to receive $2,690,204 from the county, channeling through from the federal government. Under U.S. Treasury guidelines, this money has to be used specifically for COVID-19-related expenditures. One of the categories is for public safety salaries, and that's what we're planning to report our use of these funds for, would be existing public safety salaries, so sworn police and certified firefighter salaries. There's various other categories of spending, but it's all related to the COVID-19 response.
Mr. Rao, we have the salary piece of public safety, but we're also doing three other things that you basically didn't talk about. So again, you need to give us one or two or three more details as to what the requirement is to spend this money. Like, we're putting money back into the general fund, which we know we have to do that per the general statute. We're proposing that we pay our employee salaries to bridge the gap to get us 15 next year. And we're also doing the cert money for community organization nonprofits to help with COVID or other things like rent assistance and evictions and things like that. That's what I'm looking for.
Yes, ma'am. So what this, what this, you know, federal money enables us to do is to basically free up our local tax dollars. And so, as Councilmember Bessie pointed out, that $2,690,204, almost 1.2 million of it would be used to reduce our budgeted drawdown of general fund reserves. But then, in addition to that, a million dollars of it would be allocated for distribution or the recommended distribution by the Community Investments Review Committee. And then, $166,650 of that money would be used to raise the city minimum hourly rate to $14.31 an hour. That would be effective on January 1 of this fiscal year, so it would be a mid-year pay adjustment. That would impact 79 full-time employees and 33 part-time employees. We would implement that by combining the first two pay grades, one and two, into pay grade three, which gives, brings us up to the $14.31. And then, lastly, we would provide a 1% public safety supplemental pay adjustment for sworn police and certified fire, effective January 1. That would total 300, almost $365,000. So that would, again, you know, be in response to Councilmember Bessie's request there, and then to provide a supplemental pay adjustment for our first responders during this time.
And one more thing, Mayor, members of the council, behind Councilmember Bessie's, what you're saying about the effective January the 1st, you have in parentheses a statement. Would you please explain what that means to our listening citizens?
Mr. Bessie?
Or Mr. Rao?
Okay.
It's a financial thing.
All right.
It says that, maybe Councilmember Bessie, this is the cost of the increase for the last six months of the current fiscal year.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. I was looking for my notes for the reference, and you're exactly correct.
Thank you, Councilmember Bessie. Thank you, Councilmember Adams, or Mayor Pro Tim Adams. Councilmember Clark, ask to be recognized.
Yes, thank you. And I actually found the button tonight on how to do that. I have pleaded with the council, and I'll plead again tonight, that we should not make any changes to the budget until we are far enough into this year to know where we are. We're only six weeks in. In July, we learned that the fair was canceled. That's a million-dollar hit to the budget. We, I got an email this week, I'm assuming y'all did too. The Utilities Commission is easily looking at a million to a million to $2 million worth of write-offs of uncollectible bills. We're almost $2 million greater in our late receivables than we were this time last year. At a million dollars a month, folks, that's $12 million by next June. And I just caution everybody, we just need to wait. My concern is, is what commitment are you making when we start laying people off in January? Because at the rate we're going, that's where we're heading. And, you know, if we want to spend every penny when we get it, fine, but just remember, we're in the worst recession in 90 years, and we're six weeks into it in this budget. And we already got probably a close to $3 million hit to the budget. Thank you. I would suggest that we keep all these things in committee where they've been, and we will look at them at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Councilmember Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members of city council. I've been on council now for four years, and what I've seen is a commitment to our police department, and what we haven't committed ourselves to is to our own employees, the lower level. All through this pandemic, my garbage was picked up, and we had city services of these servants that have been at the lower level of the employment scale, and we keep promising them that we're going to get them up to a livable wage. I just don't think we can keep postponing this indefinitely. We can't go and think we're going to get them from $13 to $15 in one leap. So this is a reasonable compromise. The police department is the best one, I agree, in the state. Recruiting is difficult, retention is difficult, and we need to be competitive. We need to remain competitive. If we're not competitive, we can't fulfill our missions. We can't pick up our garbage, we can't get our police force up to strength, and we're going to have to recognize that that's a priority for this city, one way or the other. So I'm in favor of this compromise. I think it's a reasonable schedule, do it a half year, and we'll meet the need.
Councilmember Harmon. Councilmember Harmon.
Listening to everyone's comments, and I agree with everyone. One of the things that I said to Councilmember Bessie when I spoke to him about this was not only supporting the 1431, but looking at the compression where you have the employees who are supervising or overseeing different individuals. So we have to look at the compression and make sure that they're getting their pay increase as well, and looking at doing that, you know, hopefully around October, since we were going to actually look at this piece around October anyway, looking at doing everything and then taking it into effect on January the 1st, not just the 1431, because people don't want to supervise somebody, and the people you supervise are making the same amount of money as you. So you have to still be able to bring that balance. So is it actually going to be that $166,000, or would it be more? Can we afford to do that between now and January? I'm going to have to take one from Mayor Pro Tim Adams. I appreciate it. We can, and we find monies to do other things. So I think we have the opportunity now to do it. So I'm for the 1431.
Thank you.
Through the compression.
Thank you. Councilmember Cipio.
Yes, I have a question to Mr. Rao and Mayor. Can you just refresh us on how much money we had to take from our reserves to balance this budget, and how much in the reserves are left, and what our reserve goal is, the minimum we must maintain?
Mr. Rao?
Yes, Councilmember Cipio. So the general fund was balanced using almost $10 million in reserves, nine and a half million, I believe, exactly, four million from our Economic Development Loan Fund, and five and a half million from the general fund. Our goal is always to retain 14% of our fund balance as a reserve, 14% of our total general fund expenditures. We're right now, based on the adopted budget, slightly over 10%. So we're under our fiscal policy standard. I don't have the number right off the top of my head as far as what our total fund balance is, but I mean, I think the overall fund balance for the general fund is probably, I think, 30 to 40 million, but I can confirm the exact numbers.
Thank you.
The question I want to follow up with is, if we have the same situation this fiscal year as we had last fiscal year, do we have enough money to be able to take from the general fund to balance our next year's budget without compromising our fiscal standard?
Well, Councilmember Cipio, we're currently at slightly over 10% of our general fund expenditures for our reserve. The state standard is 8%, a minimum of 8%. And so, if we had to go and balance the 21, 22-year budget and rely on a drawdown of additional reserves, I feel sure that it would come very close to meeting the minimum standard set by the state.
Thank you.
And we rely on our fund balance to generate working capital, investment income to pay down our debt service. And so, I think it would move us closer to that minimum.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rao. Certainly agree with all the comments that have been made tonight. It is a, I think it's a good motion, Mr. Bessie. I talked to Mr. Bessie, and I told him the only way I could support it was if that at least or about half of the money is to go back to our reserve to get to, Councilmember Cipio's point, that we've got to be looking towards next year as well, and restoring as much of that fund balance as we can. On the other hand, we do, I think, have made commitments, and raising the minimum wage is one of those, and also commitments to our public safety personnel. So we do have a motion and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Adams to approve Councilmember Bessie's substitute motion, which is $1 million to the Community Equity Investment Fund, $166,650 to raise our minimum wage to $14.31, $364,985 to give a 1% public safety salary adjustment effective January 1, 2021, and then returning $1,158,000 to the, our general fund reserves. Going to the roll call, Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
No.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
And Councilmember Harmon.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion, substitute motion passes, seven in favor, one opposed. Thank you, Councilmember Bessie. We'll now go to the general agenda, which is comprised of the following items. There is an item related to the 2020 Burn Justice Assistance Grant, an item related to the 2021 budget ordinances, an item related to boards and commissions, and our public comment period. The public comment period is a time, once per month, that the city council invites citizens to address us on matters that are germane to city government. When this virtual comment period is called, each speaker will be given three minutes to speak, and the total comment period will be limited to 30 minutes. We are televising this meeting live. live tonight on TV thirteen, and it will be replayed on Tuesday at nine a.m., and again, Wednesday at nine p.m. Copies of our agenda, as well as videos of previous meetings, are always available online at www.cityofws.org, and just click on the meetings online option. May we have item G one, please?
Item G one, consideration of items regarding the twenty-twenty burn justice assistance grant, resolution authorizing an interlocal agreement between the City of Winston-Salem and the County of Forsyth to share a twenty-twenty burn justice assistance grant program award. Ordinance amending the project budget ordinance for the City of Winston-Salem for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Finance and Public Safety Committees forwarded this item without recommendation.
Thank you. Councilmembers, you have received some additional information, and I believe I will ask Tasha Logan Ford, or Chief Thompson, or maybe both, to comment on the additional information that was provided, that perhaps answered some of the questions that came up in committee. Ms. Ford?
Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, members of the council. The item before you regarding the JAG grant, there was a specific request for staff to provide the equipment that would be purchased through the grant, and I have Assistant Chief Weaver and Assistant Chief Miles that can go through the memo to share with council those items that would be purchased, and also the timeline expected for when that equipment would be received by the city. Chief Weaver?
Chief Weaver?
Go. Just being an item that Chief Miles will handle.
Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Pro Tim, and distinguished council members. Regarding the information you requested last week, we have identified specific items that were listed for purchase contingent upon us, the police department, not receiving the Strategies in Policing Grant. We hope to have a response regarding that grant within the next sixty-eight weeks. And as you are aware, we have collaborated with FUSESS technology on a pilot program that allows us to access private cameras across the city, and in that, we also partnered with CDIS and brought them on board of this project, and right now, we have over two hundred city cameras on the FUSESS platform. This pilot program has helped us to realize the ability to utilize cameras that are, is currently existing throughout the city. Both private and public cameras are being used. We also brought the Forsyth County Sheriff's Department online, and that we introduced them to FUSESS technology, and the county has decided that they will use FUSESS, they're part of the JAG grant, to purchase cameras. One thing that is important to realize is that the vendor, FUSESS, will use a core, something that they call a FUSESS core, to connect, make those connections to existing cameras, and for example, fourteen cores were installed, which incorporated approximately three hundred cameras across the city. And since we began the pilot program, FUSESS has realized several major improvements based on feedback from the end users. We're always interested in fully utilizing technology in the efforts to protect our community, and right now, by having access to those three hundred cameras, we are able to view those cameras in real time. And I'll just add that the catalyst for the real-time crime center is violent crime, especially gun violence, and we continue to have issues with shooting incidents involving gangs and other violent crime, and we know that social media also plays a role in many of these incidents. The benefit of a real-time crime center will allow us to push out our intelligence to officers in the field. FUSESS has the ability to unify public and private video feeds and locations. We will be able to use historical data and information to solve crime. We will also be able to change and adapt as the criminal tactics change. Our hope is to be able to embrace an intelligence-led policing concept, along with strong data-driven policing model. We believe the real-time crime center would be the driving force for the police department as it relates to crime reduction strategies. In the area of law, in the era of law enforcement transparency, sharing real-time crime response successes may help to ease community tensions and enhance organizational legitimacy and trust, and help the community realize that its law enforcement agency is on top of crime problems. And in terms of a real-time crime center, cameras, we believe, the usefulness of surveillance technology in preventing and solving crime depends on the resources put into it. That includes having trained staff, enough cameras to detect crime in progress, and integrate technology into every aspect of law enforcement. Technology continues to aid in our ability to monitor public spaces, and by extension, it continues to aid efforts to prevent crime and apprehend criminals. Our effort will, to quickly apprehend suspects and minimize their ability to further victimize the community, we have been able to see that with the technology that we're currently using, and we only expect that by utilizing cameras and by partnering with FUSESS and having our real-time center in place will only enhance our ability to reduce crime in the city. The orientation time, based on FUSESS's ability to attach a core and connect several hundred cameras, we believe that we can have the camera project in place in a matter of three to six months.
Thank you. Are there other questions of Ms. Ford or Chiefs? If not, I would certainly entertain a motion if I might recognize the Chair of Public Safety, Councilmember Taylor, for a motion, and then we'll see if there's further discussion.
Members of the council, I move for approval of this item as presented.
Thank you, Sir Saka.
Aye.
Second, Councilmember McIntosh, I believe. Councilmember Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me understand one aspect of this. We really have, what, two grant requests in place, one JAG grant, and then one larger grant, and the JAG grant is to basically supplement the seven hundred thousand dollar larger grant that's being requested. If we don't get the larger grant, we feel confident that the smaller grant will still come through. Is that a reasonable assumption?
It is. Go ahead, Chief. Chief Miles, your time.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Larson, it is, and I also, I don't know if I failed to mention that in partnering with CDIS, Tom Caressa is on board one hundred percent, and he supports allocating CDIS funds towards this project.
That's, if we don't get the larger grant, we still have IS involvement in the smaller grant, and it does have some camera work in that as well. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, we'll move to the roll call to approve this. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
And Councilmember Parman.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you all very much. And we'll move to item G two, please.
Item G two, consideration of items relating to the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget ordinance for the City of Winston-Salem. Ordinance amending the annual appropriation and tax levy ordinance for the City of Winston-Salem for the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Ordinance amending the project budget ordinance for the City of Winston-Salem for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Finance Committee forwarded this item without recommendation.
Councilmembers, again, you've received some additional information from our Budget Valuation Director, Ms. Tony. Ms. Tony, would you like to make a brief comment about your memo and information you provided? Is Ms. Tony on the call, or Mr. Rau, if you'd like to handle it?
Yes, sir. So there were two items on that, that council requested additional information. One was the appropriation of federal forfeiture funds for police equipment, and in the memo that was provided with this item, it listed out several different pieces of equipment, mainly related to equipment to enhance crime scene documentation, data storage, surveillance cameras for investigations, protective gear for Special Operations Division, traffic alert signs, and crime analysis software. So, you know, these funds cannot supplant, you know, funding that was, that would already be in place to, you know, purchase equipment. This is supposed to be able to provide equipment over and beyond what the normal operating budget would cover. The second item in the amendment was the increase in property insurance for the city. Nick Webster, our risk manager, provided a memo basically explaining the two factors that are driving that increase. One is just general market conditions, what he described as a hardening of the insurance market.
It's aware.
A hardening of the insurance market, where they're seeing increasing premiums, but decreasing insurance capacity. And then, secondly, the insurance required for the Joyce Land V. Johnson Municipal Services Center, the roof in particular, they've done an assessment of the roof, and there are issues with leaking over the area of the building that was not renovated by the city, and also over the area that we have a tenant occupying the space, also some structural issues altogether, probably a ten-point-eight million dollar cost to repair that roof. And so that was also part of what's driving the increase in property insurance. Our risk management staff has looked at other options for how to insure that building, including just separating it as a separate policy, and really could not find a more cost beneficial alternative. And so the amendment basically accounts for that increased cost.
Thank you, Mr. Rau. Are there any questions to Mr. Rau regarding this additional information? Councilmember Cipio?
Yes. I neglected, Mr. Rau. I'm sorry that I didn't get this question in to you sooner. What are our long-term plans for the use of that building, and to the extent so much of that roof is in need of repair, is that part of the building we actually need to maintain for future use?
Well, Councilmember Cipio, I think that the section behind where we've renovated, you know, is where that part of the roof exists. Right now, I mean, I think it boils down to a funding, you know, issue, you know, and so that we don't have any, you know, near-term plans to relocate any city operations into that, into that space, you renovate that space and move them. So, so right now, I mean, I would say that it's an unfunded capital need.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? May I get a motion on this item, please?
So move.
Second.
That's a motion by Councilmember Larson, and second by Councilmember Cipio. Any further discussion? Going to the roll call, then. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
And Councilmember Parman.
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you. That is unanimous. We'll now go to item G three.
Item G three, Mayor Pro Tim Adams' recommendation for reappointment with the Piedmont Triad Airport Authority. Mayor Allen Joins term expires June twenty twenty-three.
I would entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Mr. Larson? Let this go to a roll call. Mr. Larson?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Aye.
And Councilmember Parman.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you, council. I am excited about the work on the Piedmont Triad Airport Authority. There's a total redo and plan for new terminal over there that I'm excited about, continuing work for the next few years, and I'd like to, I appreciate your opportunity to continue to work on that. Before we go into the public comment period, Councilmember Cipio wanted to be recognized to make a motion of a, mention of a program that's coming up soon. So Councilmember Cipio?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. Most of you are familiar with the Program Guide, G I D E, which stands for Guiding Institute for Developmental Education, and the Executive Director is Bill McCain. Well, this was an unusual summer. They oftentimes do a summer, and they also do after-school programs with some of our needy residents, the children and the parents. This year, they did a summer scholars program, which was virtual learning tutorial program, and their primary focus was literacy. This was for the whole month of July, and the reason I let you know about this is because they recruited and registered four hundred and ninety-five students, and they maintained four hundred and seventy-eight students actively who participated twice a week. So we have really good nonprofits that's doing great work, and I just wanted to give them a shout-out, because to get that many kids together virtually throughout for the whole month of July was phenomenal, and I congratulate them, particularly since they went to Roland Hills Apartments, Cleveland Avenue Homes, Piedmont Park, Castle Heights, Slidera Crest. These are communities that most people do not want to work in, and I congratulate them for their work in those neighborhoods.
Thank you, Councilmember Cipio. It is a wonderful program, and thank you for highlighting it tonight. We sort of congratulate Mr. McLean and his other staff members for working on this. Councilmembers, we'll now move to item G four, which is our public comment period. As I mentioned earlier, this is a time, once per month, that we set aside thirty minutes for citizens to address the city council and me on matters that are germane to city government. As I recognize you, would you please state your name and address for the record, and again, limit your comments to three minutes. First person signed up is Sarah Hines.
Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, and distinguished council members. My name is Sarah Hines, and I live in the two-seven-one-oh-one zip code. My ward representative is John Larson. In December of twenty nineteen, our brother, John Elliott Neville, while in medical distress and in need of compassionate care while in the custody of the Forsyth County Detention Center, was placed in a prone restraint by five detention officers, which in turn caused him to asphyxiate and die due to serious bodily injury. This was a travesty. It was seven months later that the news of our brother's death was finally reported to the public. Now, right here in our own community, the circumstances surrounding the murder of Mr. John Neville is being covered up, which in turn has led to the Triad abolition project's thirty-four-day civil disobedience occupation of Bailey Park in downtown Winston-Salem, as we demand justice and change. This occupation has been met with widespread community support, including nationwide and statewide. The Winston-Salem Police Department is not innocent when it comes to the use of excessive force resulting in the deaths of our brothers and sisters. Right here in nineteen ninety-two, Sheila Epps McKeller died after Winston-Salem police officers placed her in the prone restraint in a holding cell, and subsequently, all officers were cleared of criminal charges. And in twenty sixteen, Travis Neville Page died after Winston-Salem police officers restrained him while he was in medical distress, and all officers were again cleared of any wrongdoing. To date, none of our distinguished city council members have adequately responded to our occupation of Bailey Park, nor the policy demands. of Bailey Park, nor the policy demands that we have put forward. And those policy demands are the complete banning of the prone restraint by Winston-Salem police officers and the Forsyth County Sheriff's Department, as well as the public notification of all deaths that occur within the Forsyth County Jail. This demand to ban the prone restraint has been cosigned by the ACLU of North Carolina, Winston-Salem Urban League, HATE Out of Winston, candidate Kathy Manning, and the staff of Winston-Salem Journal, and many more. Let it not go unmentioned that while peacefully protesting and calling for justice for Mr. Neville, 55 peaceful demonstrators have been arrested by the Winston-Salem Police Department. Yet Chief Thompson's only statement on these arrests has been in the form of an interview in which she stated, and I quote, "I have experienced racism and injustice, but in our world, we are taught that this is the expectation, and you have to learn how to live with it," end quote. Mayor Jones, Mayor Pro Tem Adams.
Time is up. Thank you very much. Millicent Allen.
Yes, this is Joanne Allen, here about 284, 27102. I would just like to say tonight that once again, the city council has not listened to the people of Winston-Salem. And it is so time for all of you, or at least the majority of you, to unseat those offices, your seat, your position. Because what we're looking at now is everything that we've been talking about for the past decade, the fact that you all do not do your job properly, you do not represent the people of Winston-Salem, you represent your own self-interest. And I'm going to go into the very first one very quickly. We're going to talk about the $2.5 million that was just approved with, in the Finance Committee, or was approved to be talked about, and I'm assuming that's on the consent agenda. That $2.5 million will be going to Front Street Capital, which everyone knows that Mr. Ralph Wamboldt sits on and actually is in control of, along with quite a few of the other friends of Mayor Allen Jones. You all have done a disservice to this city, and the people are aware of what you're doing, and we're no longer taking what you're doing. We are coming after you all. We will be doing it legally because the problem that we're facing right now is the fact that we have a debunked city council. That's what we have at this moment. We have homeless individuals that are still out here on the street. We've had money that we have given and given and given to the mayor's nonprofit, the Winston-Salem Alliance, Bob Leaks nonprofit, the Winston-Salem Business, Inc., and enough is enough. And we've had city council members that have gone along to get along behind all of this. And we are no longer silent. So all I can say is that watch out because we are coming. We have not gone anywhere, and we're going to make sure that not just a handful of people know what's going on, but everyone in Winston-Salem will know what you all have done. And as far as the cameras that was just talked about, listen, we've had cameras around this city for the past almost two decades. And if you can't catch those individuals, the Winston-Salem Police Department, what makes you think that we're going to be able to catch someone by having 300 cameras around the city of Winston-Salem? My point is this, we have had poor leadership, and the only thing I can say is that enough is enough.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Thank you.
Duck McManam, excuse me, McManam.
My name is Duck McManus, and I live in the 27104 ZIP code. My ward representative is Dan Bessie. I believe that city council should move to include public comment period openings in all committee meetings. On June 8th, the Public Safety Committee meeting allowed public comments, which resulted in more discussion over the decision to find $1 million to reallocate from the General Fund to Community Resources. However, on August 10th, no public comment period was granted during the Public Safety Committee meeting, which continued discussions of the $1 million reallocation. When the public inquired about the missing public comment meetings before the start of the committee meeting on August 10th, they were met with varying responses in terms of reasoning, but overall, the job response tone was negative and dismissive. In one instance, the city Winston-Salem social media manager wrote, quote, "There is always a public hearing during the budget process. However, regular committee meetings do not include a public hearing or public comment period. I understand that many people are engaging with city government where they haven't before. That's great. However, accusing us of dishonesty without making an effort to understand doesn't help. Again, public comment will be part of the next week's meeting," end quote. In at least two other instances, city attorney Angela Carmen responded directly to emails that had been addressed to city clerk Sandra Keeney without so much as an introduction. Multiple members of the public shared that they have attended and/or witnessed city council meetings that included public hearings or comments beyond the setting of a budget meeting. Further, as has been stated by Finance Committee Chair Robert Clark, quote, "I think that we will be revisiting the budget regularly because who in the heck knows what's going on," referring to the pandemic and economy, "and as the year progresses, we can always amend the budget," end quote, quoted from the Finance Committee Budget Workshop on June 4th, 2020. Henceforth, budgetary information has always been included in city council meetings, and thus so should pub- public hearings and/or public comments. Significantly too, I believe that city council should include Spanish translations of all city council meetings in real time. This has not yet been done, but Mayor Allen Jones has had this issue brought to his attention, and so he is well aware. Without streaming the city council meetings with a Spanish translation in real time, we are not including our entire community, and this needs to be addressed as soon as possible. Lastly, city council, as a voting person in Winston-Salem, I demand that you respond to Triad Abolition Project and Occupy Winston-Salem NC's demands, ban the prone restraint, and immediately notify the public of all jail and custody deaths. I demand that you reallocate city funds to the community rather than to Winston-Salem Police Department. I demand that city council seek justice of John Elliott Neville, Ella Crowley, Elizabeth Pruitt, and all brothers, sisters, and siblings. I also kindly ask that you respond to me. I yield my time.
Thank you. Nia Vaidler?
This is Nia Sadler.
Excuse me, I didn't see that.
That's okay, that's okay. This is Nia Sadler. I live in 27103 ZIP code. My representative is Dan Bessie. In reference to item G1, I believe that city council should dismiss the move for the inter-local agreement between WSPD and FCSO to share the 2020 Burn Justice Assistance Grant. The state of North Carolina requires that the city and the county enter into an inter-local agreement for the sharing of the JAG funds. However, budgets have been separated so that funding from WSPD covers items such as office chairs, color scanners, et cetera, while the shared cost with FCSO is for surveillance cameras. To cover the full costs of the interlocal agreement for the Real-Time Crime Center, the Winston-Salem Police Foundation, the local nonprofit that provides about a quarter of a million dollars of additional support to WSPD, has agreed to fulfill the remaining costs. City council members, I wish for you to understand that the Winston-Salem Police Foundation is deeply tied to local commerce, policing, as well as legislature, but has minimal ties to the community for which you, city council supposedly represent. The Winston-Salem Police Foundation president is Barry Roundtree, former WSPD police chief. And a financial supporter of the WSPF is Councilmember Jeff McIntosh. Furthermore, in a memorandum sent by Chief Thompson to city council on August 13th, it is detailed that if the 2020 JAG grant funds are used to finance the Real-Time Crime Center project, this is potential to augment the new security camera pilot program. This pilot program, which allows law enforcement access to private security camera footage, could be enhanced by adding cameras in blind spots or areas in the city identified by law enforcement as needing additional cameras to capture video. This plan to initiate a new security camera pilot program will not decrease crime. It will instead increase the funding we allocate to WSPD, and it will increase the number of arrested incarcerated persons in our community. It will not address the root causes of crime in our community. It will perpetuate crime in our community. It will not make our community safe, and it will make our community members further fear and mistrust not only WSPD and the city council that continues to support and uphold the values of funding the WSPD over the needs of the people. Lastly, I demand that you respond to Triad Abolition Project and Occupy Winston-Salem's demands, ban the prone restraint, and immediately notify the public of all jail and custody deaths. I demand that you reallocate funds to the community rather than to WSPD. I demand that city council seek justice of John Neville, Ella Crowley, Elizabeth Pruitt, and all brothers, sisters, and siblings. I also ask that you respond to me via email at nias1252@gmail.com. Thank you so much.
Desiree DeLoche.
Hi, my name is Desiree DeDolce, and I live in 27101 ZIP code. My ward representative is John Larson. In reference to item C7 on the consent agenda, I believe that the city council should not move forward with expanding the Drug Task Force with the interlocal agreement between the city of Winston-Salem, the county of Forsyth, and the town of Kernersville. This expansion of the Drug Task Force does not mean that crime will decrease. It simply means that policing will increase and does not address the root causes of these crimes. Furthermore, crimes that involve drug possession are directly tied to the flawed war on drugs, which has severely increased policing and mass incarceration across the nation and disproportionately affected Black and Brown communities. This interlocal agreement will no doubt increase the quantity of incarcerated persons in our community. I also believe that council member John Larson of the South Ward should publicly apologize to the community for laughing as he said that the location of the new Drug Task Force warehouse, where supposedly confiscated drugs and weapons will be stored in a 21,000-square-foot facility, is, quote, "under a cloak of darkness," while congratulating the WSPD for their covertness and planning. This is no laughing matter. During this time, the community is publicly demonstrating and protesting against local and national police brutality. Our elected officials should feel absolutely beholden to what their constituents are asking of them. City council, as a voting person in Winston-Salem, I demand that you reallocate city funds to the community rather than to the Winston-Salem Police Department. I demand that you respond to and help facilitate the resolution of Triad Abolition Project's demands, ban the prone restraint, and immediately notify the public of all jail and custody deaths. I demand that the city council seek justice for John Elliott Neville, Ella Crowley, Elizabeth Pruitt, as well as our other incarcerated siblings. Thank you.
Hannah Campbell.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. My name is Hannah. I live in the 27101 ZIP code. My ward representative is John Larson. In reference to item C22 on the consent agenda, city council should not move forward with a resolution awarding purchase order for police pursuit vehicles from Asheville Ford LLC for a total of $2,42,670.60. City council should spend more time reviewing this purchase order and determine ways of reallocating public safety funds from WSPD to economic development, healthcare, housing, food scarcity, and other community-led and community-requested resources of care. This purchase order is for 62 Ford interceptors, all SUVs. Garage service fees for WSPD amounted to $1,073,761.75, and fuel costs for WSPD vehicles amounted to $895,767.23 in the 2019-2020 fiscal year. Based on the police vehicle memo received by city managers on July 15th, the total lifetime cost for Ford interceptor is $62,903, including the estimated cost of maintenance fuel and purchased by 120,000 miles. In the vehicle replacement information, none of the WSPD Crown Victorias nor Chevrolet Caprices amount to or over this amount. 24 of the 62 vehicles being replaced are still under 100,000 miles, meaning they do not meet the criteria for replacement. If the WSPD maintains these 24 vehicles, this would save $790,704. However, the memo states that the reasoning behind this new purchase order is the Winston-Salem Police Department has the need to purchase 62 police pursuit vehicles intended as scheduled replacements for vehicles with high mileage, excessive maintenance and repair costs, and meet fleet services replacement criteria. I am a voter in Winston-Salem, and I am disappointed in the city manager, Assistant City Manager, City Council's Finance Committee, and City Council's Public Safety Committee for, one, not offering time for public comments ahead of this meeting, and, two, not exercising any reallocation of funds from public safety to community resources during this time of the COVID-19 pandemic. Last week, the public safety rightfully addressed the surge of gun violence in Winston-Salem. However, overfunding our police and underfunding our communities is gross negligence toward this urgent issue in our city. This purchase order contract should not be signed. More research, clarity, and transparency is owed to the public. City council should include the voices of the public in this high-cost decision, and city councils should stop being ignorant to the fact that the community is on day 34 of an occupation that directly addresses police brutality and thus calls for the reallocation of funds from public safety to public health. City council, as a voting person in Winston-Salem, I demand that you respond to Triad Abolition Project and Occupy WSC's demands, ban the prone restraint, and immediately notify the public of all jail and custody deaths. I demand that you reallocate city funds to the community.
Your time is up. Patricia Adamola?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Adamola, and I am in area code 27103. My petition is, evening, I'm talking about freezing for Winston-Salem residents. We are aware of the fact that they have given us, the governor given us the opportunity for the suspension of rent, but that's just simply not enough because when we go through with what we're going through at this pandemic, some people's rent aren't that much. So what I'm petitioning at this point to the mayor and to the council and to Governor Cooper is that they suspend, not just suspend it, but freeze it. Because even though they suspend it, they're going to be responsible for that back rent. So there, even though it looks good now, as they go forward, they're going to have a bill that's hanging behind them, and they're going to wind up getting evicted anyway. So my petition is that, if you could please, we're asking as citizens, if you can help us out and freeze the rent, not suspend it, because that's just a drop in a very deep bucket. The monies that we're giving, we appreciate it, we love it, we're glad to have had it, but it's not sufficient because individuals are going to have a $5,000 rent bill, seven, you cannot catch that up. You're making $8.28 an hour. How are you going to catch up $8,000, $5,000 rent, $1,000 light, you're not going to be able to catch it? So I'm here just even on account of Winston-Salem residents saying, we want our rent froze. Just freeze it. And the only way that it's going to get done is for it to come from you all. And there was, I'm from Connecticut, there was a gentleman in Connecticut that was literally killed over rent, not being able to pay his rent. And I'm pretty sure everyone has heard about this story about the gentleman in Hartford, Connecticut, and decapitated his landlord over rent. It's very serious out here. The struggle is very serious out here. Someone gave me a synopsis, and they said, the politicians, they're not worrying about their eating, they're not worried about their drinking, they're not worrying about getting evicted, but that's who are worrying about it, the people of Winston and the surrounding towns and the surrounding states. And it's just simply not, and it's just not enough. It's not that we're ungrateful, we're not ungrateful, we just need more help. I yield myself right now.
Thank you, Ms. Adamola. William Dickens, Dickens, excuse me.
Yes, I was just wanting to comment that I hear, I hear y'all all.
Please state your name and address for the record, Mr. Dickens.
William Dickens, in the ZIP code 27101.
Thank you.
I hear, and it's all in the meeting, you're talking about what you're going to do to stop crime, but I hear nothing at all, as a lot of the previous callers have recommended to, nothing to prevent it. Where is the money being spent to prevent it? And where is the money being spent on all these people that you incarcerating? Why are you still funding this police force? Now, understand, according to the data, there's more Black men in prison than all race of women in the world. But all we keep talking about is that the effect of this, and nobody's talking about the cause of this. The cause is still tied to slavery, as so many don't, still don't recognize. It's the same group that you enslaved, it's the same group you now police, kill, and put in prison. And with that being said, most of these men are breaking, most of these people that's breaking the law is breaking the law because they never had the opportunity to have upward mobility that this country or this state here has never allowed Black people to have. ADOS people, the descendants of slaves, have never had the opportunity to have upward mobility. mobility. With that being said, I would like to hear more talk about what can we do for this particular group of people that's owed a debt instead of locking them up and killing them? Meaning, all of you on this committee, I don't care what your skin color is, if you ain't standing with this, if you just Aidos or descendants of slave, as I am, or if you are white, you are just the slaveholders as you have always been. Nobody is speaking about it. Everybody keep talking about getting more cameras, get more cameras. Nobody's talking about, hey, what about this 300 years of slavery these people have endured, and we benefited from it? Mr. Mayor, you benefit from it. You come from a long line of beneficiaries of this slave condition, and if you don't do nothing about it, you're just as guilty as your granddaddy. If you want to say, I never owned no slaves, you benefited from these slaves. Now it's time to say, hey, instead of writing all these statements about, oh, we sorry for this and sorry, let me see you do some work to show, other than your words, because your words are falling on deaf ears. I rest.
Philip Carter?
Philip, we can't hear you.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Philip Carter, zip code 27101, council representative in the Cipo. I'd like to say three things first. One is, listen to Robert Clark. Two, I agree with the speakers. Three, this city should try to implement some plan of reparations for the African-Americans of this city. Now to my reason of being here. May 2nd, 2017, city council gave $200,000 to Halls for the partial demolition of a building at the former Brown School. Now, at that time, it was proposed that it would become a 120-unit senior living facility. Today, it is being proposed as being used as a place to replace some of the residents from Cleveland Avenue Homes. That is absurd. That was not what the citizens signed on to. Second, in this statement, I would request that you use no bond money without there being a public hearing as to how that money is going to be used. I'd like the revealing of any covenant restrictions as it pertains to Cleveland Avenue Homes. And then, three, I would like for you, Councilwoman Matisha, Councilwoman Cipo, to ensure that those residents are afforded a 100% opportunity and being a part of the progress that is taking place in that community, meaning their income, their children's education, and the creation of better housing, living facilities for them. We've got to, and I agree with everything that everyone has said, especially, and armoring the police does not stop crime. It will not. It might catch those that commit it, but it will not stop it. As Robert Clark said, we in the rest, the worst recession we've been in in 90-something years. So are the people in our city. Mr. Rowe, you didn't say one thing about how much money is going to be used to help the vulnerable citizens of this city. I'd like to hear somebody helping all those people that be down in that majesty court, being evicted, pleading with their landlords to try to stay. Mr. Mayor, we vote for you too, so that don't leave you out of this argument, along with what I've asked of Ms. Cipo and Ms. Matisha. You're in it too. This is an election year. And closing, let me say, the people will no longer suffer by themselves. Thank you, and please take into heart the things that you've heard the citizens of this city say. Thank you.
Miranda Jones?
I'm actually not signed up to speak, Mr. Mayor, but I do agree with what Brother Philip Carter had said, as well as the others. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have exhausted our time for the public comment period, and I'll close the public comment period. Councilor Taylor asked to be recognized briefly.
Thank you, Mayor. To all the commenters who had the courage to speak today, I just want to specifically say thank you to those who specifically spoke about the prone restraint or the hog tie. I just want to say that the city, over, the police department over 25 years ago did ban the prone restraint, so we no longer do that, but we respect you, we thank you for coming to, you know, bring your concerns to us for consideration. We will look at it going forward, but just to speak specifically, the prone tie or the hog tie restraint has been banned by the city of Winston-Salem for over 25 years.
Thank you, Councilor Taylor, for clarifying that. I was going to say it myself, but you did a much better job than me in clarifying it. Councilor Clark asked to be recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I bid the distant vote on like, so I'll bid one more time. I think there is a valid argument for public comment at the committee level. It is a little tricky at finance and public and general government, because we have to end by a specific time, unlike this meeting tonight, which can go on forever if we wanted it to. But I think it would be helpful, and I think we need to adopt this as a policy, and I'm suggesting maybe 10 minutes at the start of each committee meeting to ask for public comments. I am the substitute from time to time on the TAC, which is the Regional Transportation, and they have a public comment period at the very beginning. I do not know what the Utilities Commission does or what the Planning Board does, but I think it would be helpful, and I suggested at the beginning, because if you do it at the end, we've already voted on everything. Anyway, food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion second. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? We are adjourned unanimously.